I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens that are present to comment on agenda-related items. If you wish to comment on an agenda-related item, please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes. Are there any comments on agenda-related items? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification of the next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Any discussion? Please take role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item A, new business. Item A, consideration of closing Mayor's Division 01 Non-Union to new hires, retirees, and transfers, rehires and transfers. Council consensus on the September 11, 2018 work session was to close the Mayor's Division 01 Non-Union to new hires, rehires, and transfers. In order to implement this change, council must approve making this request of Mayor's through the submission of a defined benefit plan closed division form. At this time, council could take action to close Mayor's Division 01 Non-Union to new hires, rehires, and transfers and to authorize the mayor to execute the necessary Mayor's paperwork.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
I will be voting no on this, just so everyone knows. I think it's a horrible idea.
I am, I think it's a, I think it's the right way to go. I just am sad that it's going to cost us more money for the next, I don't know, 20 years. I mean, I understand the value of getting the liability, the unfunded liability down, but in the short term, it's going to hurt us budget-wise, so I'm a little nervous about that. And I really wish this had been combined with the other one because it's, I was only going to approve this if it was at the same time happening with ICMA taking over the deferred compensation plan. So, I'm a little bit nervous about how I'm going to vote on this one. And I certainly hope that the second one actually does pass because that's the only way I would have approved of closing this one.
I think the second motion does that. It does go with ICMA as the party.
Hopefully, it'll all vote that way.
Sometimes when I make a decision, I have to look into the future and I don't, I think this is the best move for the future, the future generations of the city of Manistee, to get out from underneath this unfunded liability. I have not seen in the time I've been here the unfunded liability decrease. It's always increased with projections that it will continue to increase. So, this is just my, my take.
And actually, I don't disagree with that. It's just that we are, seem to be approving more things that cost money rather than saving money, so I do worry about the budget going forward.
Any other comments? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
No.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item B, consideration of implementing ICMA Defined Contribution Plan for new non-union and department head hires effective November 1, 2018. Council consensus at the September 11, 2018 work session was to close the Mayor's Defined Benefit Division 01 Non-Union to new hires, rehires, and transfers. This Mayor's plan will be replaced by an ICMA Defined Contribution Plan utilizing our existing 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. The city will contribute a base 3% regardless of employee contribution, match dollar-for-dollar up to an additional 7%, and cap the maximum city contribution at 10%. At this time, council could take action to authorize the implementation of an ICMA Defined Contribution Plan for new non-union and department head hires utilizing our existing 457 Deferred Compensation Plan and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute the necessary ICMA paperwork.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski. Councilmember Goodspeed.
No.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of authorizing a Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T currently has a right-of-way telecommunications permit with the city of Manistee. This permit will expire on June 30, 2019. They are requesting an extension of the permit with a term ending June 30, 2024. This permit brings in an estimated $27,000 in revenue to the Street Improvement Fund. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor to sign the Metro Act Right-of-Way Extension with AT&amp;T.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
Where exactly is the right-of-way?
It's the city's right-of-way.
It's the city's right-of-way?
Right.
Okay. Oh, that's...
There's been a lot of email traffic and such lately on some legislation going on at the state about right-of-way fees. Is this impacted at all by that potential legislation?
It's not. I think you're thinking of that small cell legislation.
Yes.
Yes, where they can, there's some legislation proposed where they can put those small cells on existing utility poles. This is different.
There was a dramatic reduction in the rates from the traffic I was seeing from the state to what is typically being charged, but did it have no, no impact at all on this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item D, consideration of a six-year installment purchase contract with Chemical Bank and Jack Doni Companies to finance the purchase of a Vector. On April 3, 2018, city council approved the purchase of a Vector truck in the amount of $403,653. When approved, it was anticipated that financing arrangements would have to be made at a later date. The Vector has been delivered to the city and now needs to be paid for. Staff competitively bid the financing arrangements and recommends the low bidder Chemical Bank to provide the financing. The city attorney has prepared the necessary documents. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to enter into a six-year installment purchase contract with Chemical Bank and Jack Doni Companies to finance the purchase of a Vector and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Grabowski. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item E, consideration of a four-year installment purchase contract with Chemical Bank and AIS Construction Equipment to finance the purchase of a loader. On August 8, 2018, council approved the purchase of a loader in the amount of $180,675 after trade-in. When approved, it was anticipated that financing arrangements would have to be made at a later date. The wheel loader is expected to be ready for delivery soon, and we will need to pay for it. Staff competitively bid the financing arrangements and recommends the low bidder Chemical Bank to provide the financing. The city attorney has prepared the necessary documents. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to enter into a four-year installment purchase contract with Chemical Bank and AIS Construction Equipment to finance the purchase of a loader and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item F, consideration of an application to the 2018 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. The Manistee Fire Department has a 70-foot aerial ladder that is 21-years-old. The city's capital improvement plan has listed the 1997 aerial as a capital project. In an effort to maximize leverage on projected costs, the Manistee Fire Department will be preparing a grant application through the 2018 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for the purchase of a new 107-foot aerial fire truck. The truck is estimated to cost approximately $950,000. At this time, council could take action to approve the application for a new aerial ladder truck through the 2018 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
I would like to know more about the 2018 FEMA Assistance Grant that they're applying for and how much it will cover and just more information on it.
Certainly. This mimics what we put in for last year with the 2017 grant. There's 5% that we're indebted to as part of that program. Last year, we also paid a 5% to the grant writer for that. We were awarded both the ones that we were put in for. This year, in talking with the grant writer, I told him that I couldn't afford that percentage 5, and I talked to him and we agreed upon 2.5% for the assistance in writing the grant, preparation for the grant. As part of that, which I think is going to be approximately around 75 grand for our costs, city manager and I have reached out to our neighboring townships and had some initial discussions about some cooperation, collaborative effort on that since we do have automatic aid with the townships. I've also reached out to the tribe to see about their working with us on this, over and above that 2% that we have through revenue sharing. One thing we also got to remember is that if this is awarded and we work through this, we're going to have a 70-foot aerial truck that we'll be putting out there for sale and we'll also have money that will be coming back into our, our, or whatever you call it, motor pool fund to help offset that, hopefully cover it, so.
Kim, what do you think that 70 footer is worth?
An initial looking at the current costs or current sales that are out there, it's anywhere from 99, about 50 to 99,000.
And will this new one fit in the same spot that the other one's in?
Well.
It will?
Yes.
Good.
Already had one backed in.
Good.
How much of a grant are we asking for?
950.
Okay, so we're asking for the full cost of the fire truck?
Correct.
Okay.
But we still would have to, you know, price it out.
Pay 5%?
Yes, 5% of that, 950.
Okay.
You've had some discussions with the tribe in adjoining municipalities. Is there anything you can share whether they're favorable about it or?
Chief Madaco talked to the Olga, and actually, I think he's going in front of the council tomorrow night, so I don't have anything solid. I think the leverage on our dollar on this is too great right now to not go for it, especially with being able to say that we have a corridor that we have assistance with, with both the townships, and our need here. I think it was demonstrated several years ago when we had the aerial come in and we put them up at Century Terrace, and ours doesn't even reach the highest point on Century Terrace, so.
I remember that day. I climbed the ladder.
Yes.
Okay.
On top of that, right now, we're averaging almost, I want to say, $6,000 to $9,000 in service every year. Luckily, we have Captain Dominic on staff that can do a lot of that. If we were having to pay for labor on top of that, our aerial ladder would be costing us a lot more annually just for service. It's tired and we need to look for an upgrade.
We're not looking to buy another demonstrator unit or refurbished unit because that's what we did when we got the current truck, and then it took us about 10 years to figure out what the hydraulic issue was with it.
I am looking for a brand-new truck.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item G, consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies for the Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Oil and Gas Investment Board, PEG Commission, Planning Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mayoral appointments require a motion, second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominee until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Harbor Commission, one vacancy, term ending 10/31/21. Two members can be non-residents but must own real estate or business or profession having a licensed business location in the city. This is a council appointment. Tom Swedenberg, 562 First Street, has applied for the position.
I'd like to nominate Tom Swedenberg, 562 First Street.
I'll second.
Okay, second required. Any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. I might add, Mr. Swedenberg would have been here tonight, but he's in ICU in Kalamazoo covering from back surgery. He should be back in the city Thursday or Friday. He's very interested in the position. PEG Commission, three vacancies, one term ending 12/31/18, one term ending 12/31/19, and one term ending 12/31/20. Applicants must be city, Manistee County residents. This is a council appointment. Shelley Membruto, 347 Second Street, is the nominee.
I'd like to nominate Shelley for 347 Second Street.
For what term?
What term?
Shelley, are you?
Term ending 12/31/20.
18, 19, or 20?
21?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
20?
It's only, there's no, it's 20, not 21.
18, 19, or 20?
20.
Shelley here?
Shelley's nominated for the term ending 12/31/20.
Yep.
Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Item nine, notices, communications, and announcements. A, a report from the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Sarah Helge will report on the activities of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm Sarah Helge. You've seen me before, president of the board at the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. The first thing I want to do, because we are always in the business of promoting, is to make sure you know about our, meet our new piano concert on Thursday night at 7:30. This is going to be a great concert. We have seven artists performing ragtime, classical, tango, jazz, classical, I think I said that, and Xavier will be performing tango, so you don't want to miss that. Student tickets are only $5, so we're hoping all of you will come. We're grateful this evening for the opportunity to tell our story of this past year. We've made a lot of progress in every way, and a lot of that progress is due to the vision, energy, and hard work of our executive director Xavier Verna. Two exciting things have happened to Xavier in just the last few weeks. He has been appointed to a two-year term on the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Board by Governor Rick Snyder, and has also been recently elected president of the Michigan Arts Presenters for a two-year term beginning January 1st. So, congratulations and thanks to him, and without further ado, I present to you our executive director Xavier Verna.
Thank you.
Oh.
Great. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'd like to just jump right in and talk a little bit about our organizational structure. Hasn't changed a lot. We have our board of directors. We did add one since last year, Ms. Jenny Pelton. We also have our staff, and I just want to explain the listing of the staff. So, I'm currently the only full-time employee with our RCA. We have Laura Ortiz, who's our administrative assistant and is with us, helping us and supporting our day-to-day operations, and Doug Savala, to an extent, also helping us on the day-to-day operations. Now, Steve Carey and Mickula are pretty much as needed roles. Anytime we have events, we need some additional support to handle some logistical and technical things, so I just wanted to clarify that. Also, our volunteers are extremely helpful and necessary in order for us to succeed. They're the first people that our patrons see, and they're the reason why our patrons have such a great experience when they walk into the theater, pick up their tickets, pick up their drinks, go into the theater. So, if any of you are interested in that role, it's a very rewarding role, and we have a lot of different job opportunities for you, and you can contact Laura at lortiz@ramzelletheater.org. Our building usage has not changed drastically, but just to cover that very quickly, we have our events that we put together, all of our productions. I give you a small postcard that talks about everything that's coming up, and so we have about 20 shows that we've been putting together this year, not including all of the community events that have been happening and will be happening in the future. We offer historic tours of the Ramsdale Theater, visual art exhibits. There's actually one happening right now by the late Pat Lottie, and it's a tremendous display of 92 of her works. To much of people's surprise, she was involved in a variety of artistic styles, and I would encourage you to check it out. I think you would be very impressed by the level of her work. So, and I also just want to thank Glenn Lottie, her husband, for having the courage to put that together. I know that Pat really wanted to do an exhibit at the Ramsdale and never got the opportunity to, and now it's up at... We have renters that are recurring. Conservatory of Dance always has a fall and spring recital with us, so they have Mary Poppins coming up this fall. Ingrid Bond teaches her regular classes at the Ramsdale, and she'll also be directing the Nutcracker Ballet during Sleigh Bell Weekend and the weekend before as well, if you're interested in that. And of course, our weddings and community events that take place at the Ramsdale. So, that's how our building's being used. So, I want to talk about the qualitative and quantitative details as far as community impact, and sometimes it's very hard to explain how important the arts is to a community, and so I'm going to capture this in the best way possible. So, first, I would, I just want to talk about community impact and the different groups that have been able to participate in activities at the Ramsdale. The listing there covers a variety of different events, from, you know, community events, anything related to the city, the Manistee County, to artistic displays, so. And also, one thing that we're working towards is engaging more and more students and bringing them into the Ramsdale. Much to my surprise, and I'm not from around here, so I just assumed that most kids, you know, knew what the Ramsdale was and have been in there before, but there are quite a few kids who had no idea that the Ramsdale existed or hadn't actually walked into the theater, and they're very pleased to hear that somebody like James Earl Jones got his start, you know, in their neck of the woods as well. So, it's always important to share that history and educate students about that, so we're working more toward that. Also, to that end, bringing kids into the Ramsdale has been a passion of mine and a very important part of whenever we book artists. So, we bring in artists from outside of Michigan and from Michigan, very talented musicians. We want to try and find ways to expose them to the community. So, last year, we held a program with the Chamber Music Group, the Acropolis Reed Quintet. We were actually able to send them out to schools in the county and also bring kids into the Ramsdale. Again, a lot of them coming into the theater for the very first time in their lives, and you can see the results of that impact there. We have another program just like that this Friday at 1:00 with the Pigeon Creek Shakespeare Company. Their Michigan's premier, Michigan's premier Shakespeare Touring Group that will be holding a Shakespeare 101 class, talking about a variety of Shakespeare's plays. It is a free event for schools. They're also going to be performing Friday night and Saturday night, and that event is also free for students, and parents will pay for that. So, we're going to continue on this path and hope to increase the amount of residencies that we do here in Manistee and come up with some other creative ways to do it. So, going on with community impact, partnerships are very important for us and part of our mission. Some of you were at the Brandenburg Festival earlier this June, which was a partnership with both the City Opera House and also Interlochen Center for the Arts. It was a tremendous display of artistic quality in the classical music realm, and we had just the best time. People were absolutely floored by just the fact that we had that many musicians on stage of that quality, and they were visiting from not just Michigan but also out of the state of Michigan. So, it was a really big undertaking for us, but well-received and well-attended, and recently partnered with the Shoreline Music Society, which is, they are a new nonprofit that formed, and they are essentially helping us further our mission and vision by providing more chamber music events at the Ramsdale. And last week was their opening night, and it was a lovely night. We had a great audience, very receptive to the idea of speaking with the maestro directly and interacting with all of the musicians before the concert started, during the concert. It was another great display of artistic talent. Musicians from... talent. Musicians from the state of Michigan and also outside of the state of Michigan came to be a part of that orchestra, and so we'll be looking forward to more events by Shoreline and, you know, continuing that partnership with both them and Interlochen and exploring some new ones. In the news, media is very important, and, you know, this is just a few of the places that we've had exposure. There's been a lot more exposure out there, and I just want to reiterate, you know, there is obviously a lot of talk about what's happening at the Ramsdale, but the key thing here is that all of these media partners are talking about Manistee as well, and they're bringing attention to all the great work that we're doing here. And I think that that's important to understand, that it's not just about the events at the Ramsdale. We're also trying to improve the arts and cultural sector here and tourism here in Manistee, and a lot of what we do is bringing more and more people to Manistee. And we'll talk about that a little bit with some of the graphs that I have for you. In terms of the numbers, you know, we have nearly tripled our audience. We have a variety of programs that we offer. Again, like I said, bringing in new audiences to the Ramsdale and to Manistee. We had a great summer. We had all those acts that were there. Those are everything up to the show with Ed Asner. Concessions, we provide at every event now, and with the, by the end of the year, we'll have our permanent liquor license, so that'll help improve the revenue stream a lot more at concessions during events, and it's just standard in performing arts venues to have that. So we're very excited for that. We appreciate your support in obtaining that, and Kurt Van De Waal as well for helping us with that and helping change that legislation so that it can apply. So we're on the right track there. So a few graphs here just to kind of explain, again, community impact. So after every show, I always send out a survey so that we can start collecting information and see what the impact is like. So this one questions about how far they drive, and what's important here is obviously, you know, most of the people, you know, you could say seventy-five and close to that, are going to be, you know, Manistee County residents, but we're bringing in a lot of people from outside county lines. And I think it's important to note, too, people are making a decision to drive sixty miles or more to come to an event, but you bet that they're going to be spending money on gas, they're going to be, you know, going out for dinner, spending money downtown, and maybe, you know, staying at a hotel so that they could take an early morning drive. This is a demographic in terms of age of our audience, which is pretty consistent with a lot of the performing venues out in the nation. So this actually just helps inform our process a little bit more in our strategy in terms of, you know, we really, at younger age, demographic. A lot of that has to do with the shows that we book, the type of engagement that we do, trying to break that barrier of, you know, classical music, for example. That word can be a little scary for people. So, you know, trying to find creative ways for engaging them and teaching them and educating them about this and telling them that, you know, it could be a lot of fun to come to events. So here's a picture of the local economic impact, right? So a majority, a strong majority of the people who come to events are going downtown and spending money on food. So that's important to know. And the national average is about twenty dollars per patron that spends in addition to the ticket purchase. So all that revenues is impacting the local economy. Now, here are two really interesting graphs. So first time visiting the Ramsdale, and that, since the last time I had presented this, has grown a little bit, and then also first time visiting Manistee. So the efforts that we're putting in are bringing in new people to this area, to Manistee County. So going into the finances, I just want to point out, we have, obviously, making a lot of great strides. We're headed the right direction. We're working towards that self-sustainability mode. You know, it's going to take us a little longer to be fully self-sustainable, but we are seeing some progress, about twenty-five percent revenue increase, and that does include the city's contribution in there. We obviously understand that there's a decline in the city contribution, and we're working with you on that. And what we have budgeted for fiscal year 2019 is, as you see there, with a contribution of fifty-five grand from the city, and I just want to point out, too, you know, all the economic impactings that I've been talking about, and anytime that we apply for a grant, having, you know, being able to have matching funds, all that is really a testament to your support. So we did receive, I'm happy to report, we did receive a grant from the MCACA this year. We had requested thirty and received fifteen thousand. It's actually a combination from Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs and the National Endowment for the Arts. But again, you know, in order for us to apply for that, we had to know that we had the necessary funds to match that. They do a one-to-one match. There are several other grants that we apply for that, again, it really helps that support from you. So we appreciate that. We're very excited to get this grant. Again, MCACA recognizing our work is always a really good, you know, thumbs up. We're heading in the right direction. Revenue goes up, expenses go up, right? So we have seen a lot more expenses primarily due to the fact that we are booking more shows. We're booking more quality shows, so we have to pay more for that, but also, marketing becomes a very important component in order for us to bring in people to this area and, you know, even the people who live here, convincing them to come here. We did see net income in 2018, about the end of that fiscal year, and we are operating at a loss this year, and that has a lot to do with just some of the repairs that we have to do in the building. We just, you know, there's a lot of things we have to work through so that we can make the building more functional and safer, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. We did a wish list, so I'm happy to say the first one, which was probably the most important one, was our sound system, which we're able to cross that off the list, and I want to thank Manistee County Community Foundation Limitless Fund for their support there. We were able to purchase that, getting a grant from the Community Foundation. That's been an important piece of our productions and the experience that patrons have. The soundboard that we had was over fifteen years old. It was showing his age. Anytime we had a professional sound engineer come to the Ramsdale, they never wanted to use our stuff because it wasn't up to date. It's not the stuff they used to using, but it also tends to be unreliable. So it was an important in order for us to continue offering what we offer right now. Our LED sign is now installed, and hopefully will be up and running later this week. We also, oh, this is a really big one, and Sarah had just talked about this event that we have Thursday night. The reason we're having this event is because we had a generous donor, we had several donations from patrons to support the purchase of a grand piano for the facility, which has been a great need for us. So we'll be celebrating that this Thursday. I really hope you can join us. We'll have several different artists performing that night. But I think the other thing I wanted to say about this is that this should be encouraging to everybody to see that there's this much support for the arts in Manistee. You know, I think a lot of people probably thought, you know, something like this was not possible, but, you know, any artist and arts professionals and arts businesses should be encouraged by this, that there are people out there that really value the artistic quality and the presentation that we can give here in Manistee. So we're very proud of that. New addition, got a couch donated for our dressing rooms so we can have more areas of comfort for artists. We didn't get foldable chairs, but we got some chair covers, snow blower, that's important. So that's about fifty percent of our list, which is really great. This is our endowment fund. We have two. So we have one that, the preservation fund, that's supporting the general maintenance of the restoration efforts that went through. We just get a small percentage of that every year that we can use for general maintenance things in the theater. Some of that, for example, was, we were able to use to help match some of the dollars from the Community Foundation for the sound system. The other is a programming, which is, you know, essentially, it's like making a donation directly to the Ramsdale instead. They're just going through the Community Foundation. So our performance today has been point seven-one percent. So just a quick summary, you know, hopefully, from this picture, you see we're on the right track. We're headed there. As far as self-sufficiency, it's going to take us some time to fully realize that, but I think I'm encouraged to see all of the positive feedback that we're getting from the community and the support that we're getting from the community and from city council. It's very important for us to keep that moving forward. You know, we're going to continue to market and work with, you know, Chamber of Commerce, work with the Visitors Bureau to really promote Manistee. And my new role, serving as council member for MCACA, that's going to be, you know, my biggest advocacy point, is promoting the arts in Manistee and to tell them that, you know, city council is very supportive of the arts in Manistee is going to really speak volumes. So, you know, as I kind of flesh out my role a little bit more, you know, I'm going to probably come back to you and work with you on some things. And, yeah, so, coming up, you have that postcard. I hope you can join us this Thursday, Shakespeare this weekend. Billy Strings is sold out, so unfortunately, we don't have any more tickets available for that, but we do for the Nutcracker Ballet, and our first-ever New Year's Eve party should be a blast, nineteen-twenty's prohibition-era party. Should be lots of fun. And we'll have our liquor license by then, so. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you and congratulate you on your appointment.
Thank you.
Report. I think when you guys were here in the spring, you talked about the weddings that you had booked for a lower number than anticipated.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any improvement in that this season, or did you find other events that were kind of a surprise of people wanting to Hardy Hall to host?
Yeah, that's a great question. This year, after speaking with different vendors, everybody's experiencing a dip. Nobody knows why. It's just...
You mean for the weddings?
For the weddings, yeah. Vendors like DJs and haters. There's really no direct answer as to why that's happening. Could be that people are deciding to elope, maybe go to Vegas, I don't know. But we are starting to see a lot more interest in 2019, and we're already starting to book for 2020. So.
Okay, that's good. But the second part of my question was, did you pick up any events or any, I'm sorry, any scheduling of using Hardy Hall that was not budgeted for that was kind of a surprise in a good way, so?
I think more art exhibits than we had anticipated.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I would not have believed that two, three years ago that this would even be possible, that we'd be where we're at right now. The creativity and thinking of the box is wonderful. You've got things coming here that I don't believe has ever been here, not as long as I've been here anyway, so I appreciate your hard work. You work behind the scenes. You don't, you're not out there waving the flag and trying to promote yourself. You're just doing your job every day, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you and congratulate you. I'd like to see more of the council members at the next gala event participating and support financially for it.
Oh, yeah.
The, it's really a good event, good mixer, good meal, so enjoy that. As you've upgraded some of the events that you're holding and stuff, like Ed Asner, did we make money on that?
Yes, and we had sponsorship from Munson Healthcare for that as well, and those sponsorships helped us realize a lot of those ticket revenues. So for that, yes, that was a, that was a big event. We almost pulled that out.
That was a fairly high artist fee, so.
Yeah.
I hope that made some money.
It did, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm really happy to see that you're developing a strong relationship with Interlochen. My brother graduated from Interlochen, and I think probably being able to send him to Interlochen saved his life in high school because he's very, very intelligent, but he's dyslexic. So he went to the right place. When I told my parents in two thousand that I was considering investing in buying property in Manistee County, my mother said, "You need to go see the Ramsdale." So all of, I think it's just karma that all of this is coming around. So, great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I'm happy to hear that you're getting more kids involved through the schools, so that's great to hear. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Get the Armory kids up there, too.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Xavier.
Thank you.
Okay, concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance that are recognized by the mayor for comments, please limit your comment to five minutes. Others submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to address council? If not, we'll move on to officials and staff. City manager.
Nothing at this time.
City attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City clerk.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Chief financial officer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety director. Public works.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Really? Anything new to report?
I was deferring to the mayor, Protem.
Just, there's a lot, you know, obviously, there's a lot going on with the CSO, but one recent item, Jeff had attended a meeting...